The meeting's ordered at six o'clock. First on the list, we can't really get going until Joel gets back. Do we need Joel? Well, I suppose you're right, okay, sorry. So, adopting the agenda, any changes? No changes, all right. Take a motion to adopt. On favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next is the mission and vision statement. And Todd, do you want to use the mic? Thank you.
All right, let me introduce you first Dawson. All right, tonight we have Dawson Store reading. Parents are Jason and Brittany Store. Dawson is a fifth grader. Siblings are Drew and Daxton. His favorite subjects are English and math. And some of his interests and hobbies, he loves spending time with family and playing with his brothers. Helping Grandpa Doug on the farm and Grandma Darlene in the house with the housework. He loves amusement and water parks and playing Fortnite. Take it away Dawson.
Dual School Mission Statement and Beliefs Mission Statement. Empowers students to become independent learners, personally accountable and responsible citizens. Belief statement. Dual School District believes everyone in the community contributes to the education of children in our schools. Therefore, we are committed to personal responsibility and accountability, respecting others and maintaining an open line of communication in the district, providing opportunities and resources for individual success, maintaining and communicating high academic and professional standards.
Well done Dawson, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming. Awesome, that's it, yeah, and you guys don't have to stay either, if you don't want to. Yeah, awesome. Thanks for coming. Did a good job. Okay, and next is our public comment. I'll let you introduce.
Yes, this is Dr. Gail Juno Butler, who has been providing all of the help for us and all the things that we've been doing with Studer. So, as you guys know, we've been wanting her to come here and present on what we've been doing and what she does. And you have the floor.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, it was nice to meet you all. And I'd like to share with you in maybe ten minutes, fifteen minutes max, what's been happening as far as our partnership together. So, you have in front of you two documents. I'm starting from the second page here. So, Studer Education is a leadership cooperative.
Are you, is she close enough to the mic? You know what, okay. Just want to make sure everybody can hear.
It's probably better, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
How's this? Is this better?
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you Matt. The document in front of you capture what we've accomplished over the last year. And I want to start by sharing that Studer Education is a leadership organization. So, we work with K-12, as well as colleges and universities, as well as government associations, under the umbrella of organizational excellence. And that's mostly related to working with executive leaders in those organizations I just mentioned on two aspects of leadership. One is culture, so the culture of an organization, and the strategies that are being deployed to accomplish the excellence that a particular organization wants to accomplish. So, spent now almost a year with Dual. And the following is a list of what we've done together. First and foremost, when I was hired in as coach, the ask immediately was to work with the existing strategic plan, which is multiple pages and constructed by you all over time, meaning the community over time. The desire was to refine that document, maintaining the pillars, as well as the essence of what was to be accomplished, but make it presentable and actionable in such a way that we will be able, and we, I mean Superintendent Katie, Mr. Offe and I, can meet every couple of months and determine are we accomplishing progress on these things. So, what am I talking about these things specifically? It's page one, so the red document is a revised strategic plan. You already know this, it's my understanding that you've seen these documents along the way. What we're doing now, in addition to keeping the pillars the same and then really figuring out the essence of what is desired to be accomplished in the first year, which is under 2024, 2025 goal, we worked on creating a definition that we can always go back to because these last one year, the strategic plan lasts one year. But overall definition is not going to vary much. So, at the end of next year, when we ask ourselves, have we accomplished what we said we would under each strategic planning pillar? We can say yes, hopefully to all of them. And then return to the definition for how does that need to be tweaked or changed in a big way for the following year. So, that's why the definition exists. The goal gives you specific knowledge, language and context for what we will work together to accomplish and to bring to you next year, so that's under the goal part. And then the metric is what tool will we use to accomplish those goals? I'll come back to that in just a moment. But this is your refined strategic plan in a way that you can expect and should see action in terms of success by the end of it next academic year. We spent a lot of time on that work together. I was also asked to survey the teachers on perceptions of the administration. That was extremely useful. Time spent, the overall rating was eight out of 10 for culture on the school district of the administration by teachers. And what we took from that document, I'm pulling it up right now. What we took from that document was action on a couple of areas. Improved communication, so that was stated most often by teachers as a need by administrators. It already exists in the strategic plan, so that's a double win for us to work on communication. Equity across levels, and what is meant by equity is elementary treated the same as middle, as high. And so, I know the administrators have been working on equal face time, equal perception of, equal contributions by the various categories. That's definitely something that's being worked on. And then the two around that are around special education more specifically, and that's increased competencies on accomplishing compliance. That's just the reality, so we're keeping a pulse on that. And then someone to perform those particular roles of special education support surfaced as a topic there too. So, again, very useful to hear the perceptions of teachers on the administration. At some point, we'll want to go back and say, hey, has this improved in the ways that we wanted it to around those areas that I identified as the biggest ones? So, also hats off to the administrators for listening to hard feedback by the teachers on improvement. In the area of culture, leadership rounding is the tactic that we've spent the most time on. You know about it already. The update that I'll provide to you is that all certified staff have been rounded with. And they'll be rounded with three additional times before the school year ends, and then four times next school year, so extremely good. How we spend our time today is continuing to chisel away at that scorecard. So, the actionable with progress, we determined what survey would be used to measure what outcome. And those are under the four areas of page three, that's listed as page two, but it's page three in this document compilation. Under communication, academic achievement, student behavior and student support. We're calling that pillar a work in progress because under that pillar in the goals from your original document, it's more language around culture. So, you can refer to that original strategic plan. We're trying to make the pillar match what the language of the goals is. And what it is, is that we want there to be a strong student support piece in the culture of district excellence. So, that's going to be a work in progress. In, excuse me, April or May of next year, for those categories of potentially district culture, community engagement, facilities, the surveys will be administered to parents, to community and to staff in which item constructs will be pulled out that relate to these topics of community engagement, district culture and facilities. And we'll be able to provide specific information to you at various intervals on how the action planning toward meeting those goals is going. I am looking to see if I have failed to mention anything, and at this point, it doesn't look as though I have. To close, I will be onsite again in this partnership. You have six days per year. I will be onsite again in February, April and May to continue to refine and advance the body of work around continuous improvement for Dual. And it's going very well. We get along well as a team, we think together as well as a team. And there's definitely the expressed desire by them individually and collectively to advance the work. Turn it over to questions now at ten minutes.
Good, thank you for that summary on the supporting documentation.
Yeah, thank you.
If you guys have questions, if you want to turn your mic on, Joel.
I would say, with all due respect, because this is not an easy accomplishment, but the role of an individual committed, specific special education leader is not one that's absent in many of the school districts that I've coached. So, that's what comes across to me as most obvious from what I've learned thus far.
Question? Any other questions?
Your contacts will be, in February, you'll be onsite. Otherwise, you have contacts once every two weeks, once a week, what do you do?
With the administration team?
Yes.
In a scheduled way, once per month. And in between that, as often as we need to. And usually, when the work picks up, the scorecard work, then we'll probably talk more than once a month.
Sure.
As far as the metrics goal, I mean, just resurveyed it.
That's where you start. So, you can't just, you could, but it would be highly difficult to accomplish. Can't just start by saying, for example, under the community engagement, you can't just start by saying, we need five additional internships in the community. Because we don't know, we don't know how many we need, how many students need opportunities for internships. So, setting the stage with a good and proper survey instrument that's focused on your strategic actions and accomplishments is the right place to start. Now, for 25, 26, we should be looking beyond benchmark survey results to accomplish goals. We should be looking to more of what are we finding out from the surveys that we want to test and improve in tangible ways beyond that reception space.
As determined by your group here.
Yeah, and one thing that's unique and positive about working with Dual administration is for everything we've done thus far, it's, well, this is what we think, but let's get focus groups from the teachers, from the staff, or let's get input from the community. So, yes, ultimately the administrators, but it's my perspective and experience that they rely heavily on the pulse of the community as well, internal and external.
And that's not atypical either? That's normally what happens?
It happens, it happens quite a bit better here. And I attribute that thus far to two things that I note, observe and experience. One is it's a smaller school district in which the administrators wear multiple hats in more ways than a larger school district. And two, the school district in its uniqueness is very integrated with the perspective of the community. So, that's, to me, that seems inherent as part of culture here.
Okay.
Do you help at all with constructing surveys?
I do, I do. So, we have in-house surveys. Of course, there's a cost associated with each. And at this point, the district does not, is not in contract for those surveys. But customized surveys, one or two off questions, not our branded surveys. Yes, I will be responsible for creating, administering, analyzing and reporting on.
We just, we just talked about this, and we took the survey portion out of the bid to save some dollars. But in talking even prior to coming in here is, you know, I'd say, oh, we have a question for that, that we're already using. So, when it comes to survey time, I'm going to share those and she can give feedback on, okay, that's a good question, that's not a good question, and...
Certainly part of the purview of what you have in this contract.
Have you spent any time defining culture or doing any, I know that's a big part in your book that you talk quite a bit. I mean, is there, is there, do you have a definition, or are you going to have a definition of what you found?
So, it varies by district, you know, what's the inherent culture of an organization. But one thing that we do state across organizations, regardless of type, is that culture eats strategy for breakfast. So, you can put together all the scorecards that you want, but without an engaged culture who believes and trusts the leaderships, it won't be accomplished. And leader rounding as a tactic is the single most effective way for beginning to establish a foundation for culture. And beyond that, should that be, for example, something that you want? What is culture for Dual School District specifically and tangibly? Absolutely part of the purview of something we could do.
Plays that role, it's probably important, yeah, I'd say that we need to nail that down.
Got it. All right. But thank you for the time. Appreciate it and for the support and for the update.
Thank you for coming.
You're out of where, where are you out of? Sioux Falls?
I should have said that, no, I live in Las Vegas. So, I live in Las Vegas, we're a completely virtual company. I've been with the company for seven years, and our headquarters is Pensacola, Florida. So, all over the place.
You're not going home tonight, is what I was...
No, 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 no. In fact, hopefully I'll make it, I'm in Sioux Falls tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, safe travels. Okay. So, we'll move on to the next item on the list is conflict of interest disclosures. There are none. And the next is, we'll approve the consent agenda. So, it's the meeting minutes for December ninth and the December payroll. So, I'll take a motion on those.
See ya, thanks. So moved, yeah.
Second, thank you. Yep, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item we'll get into is for old business, and that's a discussion of the 25, 26 calendar. So, that's on page six and seven.
Six and seven.
So, we sent out obviously two drafts, as well as, there was additional content on kind of the average or the set days in other school districts. So, where do you want to start? What questions or comments? So, maybe the, we'll just clarify, draft one is starting on August 19th as maybe the biggest difference. And then the draft two is starting on August 12th, with some other small variables that are different.
Chad, you got a lead in for this one?
The only thing I'm going to tell you in regards to the feedback that I've got, the teachers that have talked to me would prefer the later start. I know we heard some of it from the community. If you take a look at those two, the only thing that I have done since the last meeting, and it's irrelevant to this, is I've swapped a couple of Fridays. I have had some staff members that wanted to be in on the day before parent teacher conferences, so I swapped the 10th and the 3rd of October. And our staff liked coming in the Friday after the first of the year. So, I swapped that with the 19th of December, which is the last Friday before Christmas. So, they're just small changes, some Friday swaps. Other than that, I have not, I have not done anything. So, to be quite honest with you, it's whether or not you want to start a week later or start as corresponding date. I know I had sent out some data to see, just to compare to other schools, where we're at in terms of hours. Granted, that was a little too much to print out, so it gives you an idea of where we're at.
Chad, when you say swapped, what do you mean by swapped?
Well, I just swapped a day. I just swap dates, they're Fridays, so I took one that we didn't have it, and I swapped it. Exactly, yep.
So, we did have a focus group meeting, probably the week after the last board meeting, so it's been a while now. But this was one of the things that we talked about in the focus group meeting. I overwhelmingly have heard from parents that they would rather start later. One thing that was brought up with the later start is snow days. I know that Wade mentioned, you know, with the later start, unless days, snow days are, you know, more...
More apt to make them up.
Yeah, yeah, it's a bigger deal basically to miss a day for snow days. We did kind of brainstorm a few ideas at that focus group of ways to make up snow days, some things that the parents would like, instead of waiting until the end of the year and then, you know, every Friday the end of the year, try to make them up as soon as possible if we're making up snow days, some different things like that. But overall, what I have heard is that people are wanting the later start date. Just keeping that in mind.
Yeah, it allows the kids a nice summer, big summer break. We're still getting 151 days in. We're over the hours, I mean, we're over 1,000 hours still. 1,011, so teachers are in more helping our students on those Fridays.
So, can we, can we do some blending here? If we're going to, you know, what you're saying, with making up some snow days, and we don't have a lot of leeway with snow days when you're up against a tight schedule or a shortened schedule, can you automatically put, you know, take a Friday a month here, and a Friday a month here, and a Friday a month here, and get that, those days closer so you're at 154 days or 150? You can make up, if you had five Fridays during the year, in a given month, you can make that up, so...
That was one thing that was discussed, is having those listed.
Like designated?
Some schools do that, have them predetermined?
So, if we have a snow day, it would, we would make it up this day. If we have another snow day, it would be this day. I think, I think that what I am hearing is people don't want to build in snow days just in case we have, I mean, some years we don't have any snow days. And so, they would rather not have those, they would rather not have those built in and just make it up if necessary.
So, we got two different thoughts here. You said, one, we want them scheduled ahead of time, now we're going to do them right after, so that's really not scheduled ahead of time.
Have them scheduled so if we have a snow day, so say like, what's an example? Like February 20th, we could designate if we have a snow day before February 20th, that would be a makeup day. So, then we would have school if there's a snow day. If we haven't had a snow day, it would, yeah.
Yeah, I assume like we'd have one in December, right? You'd have one, just as tentative, it'd be maybe the 19th or the 12th in case we have.
You got, you know, you got a day off on the 12th in the draft two. That could be a possibility, is the 12th in December, have that scheduled, make it a snow day if you have one.
I've got a calendar here from another school, I'll just show you what they've done. If you'll bear with me a second.
Four day school or five?
Four day.
Fridays off, always?
Yep.
And not every, I don't know about this. My question is, do every other four days operate like us? Where they use their Friday to have student help day, or do they completely? Yeah, exactly. And so, the value that we get from the Fridays being off is a little bit different than what other schools can or can't schedule because of what we use that time for.
Run accelerator. Get it big enough to. So for instance, this school had a January date, two February dates, a March date, April date, and a May date. So they predetermined six days that were, that were built in.
And only take them when they have to.
And only take them when they have to, so if you have one prior to that particular date, that's the first one you default to.
Well, can we take them on these, you know, like December twelfth was a day, no, no people here on the twelfth. Pick those days and designate those days as possible.
Yeah.
You take, we have PD day and then add that to it.
Yeah.
But it doesn't get us any into April, you'd have to invent one out there.
Yeah, and that, that could be, that, that could be easily done to predetermine those days. And I'd have to, I'd have to look and see where other things are at.
I do want another thing that was mentioned as well, and I am not sure how people will feel about this, but virtual learning days. But not for elementary because elementary needs less hours anyway. Elementary does not have computers coming home with them. We used to do snow packets, but it was more hassle than anything for teachers, parents, everyone involved. And, and most of the time, if not all of the time, students have, middle school and high school students have their computers home. But we did discuss with that too, you know, flexibility as far as if kids don't have internet at home, it can't be, like you're expected to be on Zoom all the time because some kids are out helping on a farm, you know, moving snow, stuff like that. So there'd have to be some flexibility with that possibly. But that was another, you know, just having, because they all have the, it's a plan book, so they can all get assignments. So, I don't know, that was just another option that was discussed too.
What do you do with the grade school part of it, the elementary, they would be making up these days?
They wouldn't be, elementary doesn't need as many hours as high school.
We just trump them all together, but they don't have to.
Elementary has less hours required than high school. And so, and, and, I mean, depending on the year, some years we only have a couple. So we could do that for a couple and instead of making up or, it, it was just some options that were thrown out at, when we were brainstorming.
You're saying the elementary, state regulations don't dictate how many they have.
They have less hours.
They have less, they have a lot less required hours.
But as of right now, we aren't. We were going to require all the same, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I automatically.
Last year they were shorter in the elementary.
I automatically default to the highest required hours, which is nine sixty-two and a half.
Because I think in your email, you had less hours in the elementary last year.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
It's all how it's coded into campus.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know that that was true.
When they have a parent teacher meeting, is that taken out of elementary and high school?
Parent teacher conferences are actually considered school hour time, they're considered.
So that, I just see they had less hours in that email.
Yeah. And I don't have those hours included in these, in these.
The breakdown between?
No, yeah, like the ten eleven and the ten thirty-eight, I don't have parent teacher conferences.
Right.
You can use them towards that, but really it's a student contact time.
So we're thinking zero snow days then and we would just do makeup?
I think so, and just have them designated, I like that idea.
So that's your, that's your bottom line then and everything is made up?
So our minimum is one fifty-one and then any snow days you make them up?
You gotta, I mean, you, you can't have both ways. I mean, if you're going to shorten your year, you got to put school days back in somehow if you get snow days, that's just how it is.
I think we shortened our year from last year to this year, but this isn't shortening the year historically how we've had, our schedule has it. Have we been one fifty-one in past years, not just last year, but years before? Yeah, I don't know either.
Well, look more at the hours, I guess. I did, I did hours, nineteen and twenty, we were nine sixty-six. Twenty twenty-one, we were a thousand four. Twenty-one twenty-two, we were a thousand thirteen. I couldn't find twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm not sure why, but twenty-four, twenty-five, yeah, well, thousand twenty-five. Yeah, I mean, I guess it just, you know, yeah, we, we could talk in relation to our, within our own history. But I guess when you look at, you know, where we're at versus the state average, we're, with the April nine, or the August nineteenth start, we're going to be, based on last year's average, we'd be fourteen days less with twenty hours less than the state average. So, I mean, it is what it is, but I, I mean, like to your point, Joel, I mean, we're running, in my opinion, we're running really low on both fronts. And I guess my job, I feel, as a board member is to try to utilize our resources as much as possible. I guess if it were up to me, I, I would try to build in a couple more Fridays with students. I just feel that, that's a really low number and.
Can you tell me, you're thinking about what makes the right number? What makes low versus high, like what, and how would you measure success in that way?
Well, so I, I guess just look at our average. I mean, like I said, we're, right now, we're twenty hours less than the state average. So I mean, that's just the average. So we've got districts that are ten, twenty hours above that. So our students are maybe thirty to forty hours less than some districts.
But you're just measuring it based on what everybody else does, essentially. That's our metric right now.
Well.
I'm just saying, like, that's what it is.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
But we can't say like, a week, four days is better than less four days because we have no other metric around that. This is the only way to measure anything, is what everybody else is doing.
That's also not taking into account any of the Friday hours that students are here.
Well, that's not, I mean, you, they're not required to be here.
No, they're not required to be here, but there, some are here. And so there is, I mean, there is teaching going on at that time, so I mean.
And other districts would have kids in at other, after school or before school as well. The other thing I asked Chad about was how many days on average do we, are students absent? And that, what, six point seven? That's the average?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, so, you know, just an average student is gone almost seven days on top of this. So you're, you're below average on student days, you're below average on hours, and then compound that with seven days absent.
I'm guessing that's an average though of absenteeism across other schools.
I realize that, but it takes the bottom lower. We're, we're lower route and then we lower it again. I mean, I mean, so, yeah, it is what it is. That's why, I guess, I would be a proponent as a district that we set a, a percentage over the state base. If the state base is nine sixty-two, we should set a, a base minimum of five percent. That would put us just north of a thousand hours. And then that way, when it comes time to build a calendar, that's our bottom benchmark and we start there and we work up. So everybody is clear on what the expectations are. We're not going to decide that tonight, but I would like to have that discussion sometime in the near future about where that minimum should be. Because that does bring clarification. That would be what right now, Wade, according to that? It's just, yeah, it's almost right at a thousand eleven, thousand ten would be five percent. I do like that idea of, you know, so every year we're not wondering where the number is, where that happy number is. Let's just pick a number and, and we're not even, we're not, it's above our pay grade to say which is better. We just don't know, so we're going to go by state averages, I think. And just put the days in we need to get, put in to get the days and be done with it.
Do you have any correlation to the schools that have higher hours and their performance?
I guess I don't.
Okay. I'm just curious how, what a difference it makes, you know, what twenty hours.
That data if you spend a lot of time on a computer.
I could do it, I know. I wouldn't actually take that long, I just.
I guess the only, yeah, the only comparison I guess that I kind of keep coming back to is, is I guess I would, I think we all agree that athletics are, are a form of education. And we have all of our athletic programs in here, five days a week for practice, sometimes six days a week. So if more days means more performance, more education, I guess my question be is, why does it not apply on the academic side and it does on the athletic side? But I mean, you could use smarter balance, you can go off the website and pull that numbers together, but it takes a lot of time to do that. I mean.
We have value in why we're not, I mean, there's other, you, you can't compare apples to apples in that, in that example because we, we use Fridays for other benefits too. So I get, that was a decision made years ago, four days versus five days, and so that.
But my point is, is it all comes into contact days and hours, it all adds up. So it's all kind of intertwined. I, I understand that, I'm not, but I'm just saying to me, I, I would really like an explanation, I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask for one tonight, but I would like better understanding as to why certain aspects of our district look at five and six days a week and we, we don't necessarily look at, at student in class time the same way. But again, I guess if we're going to give my opinion on what I think as far as a calendar goes for this year, I guess I would, I'm in favor of not having the, I guess basically any snow days, we would pencil in, like we've talked about, the tentative dates and with the August nineteenth start. And then I would, I guess, propose that we do set a, a base minimum, I guess sooner than later would be my. Whether it is the average or whatever, I mean, if it's average, it's the average, but, but, you know. I just like to, I mean, I sure like to be average, you know, the average days of everybody else. Well, or at least get to average, I'll, I don't know, however you get there, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's just. Five percent above your average, I don't know, that's. I mean, we've, we've got a great facility, we've got a great staff, we've got, we've put a lot of resources into this facility in the last two to three years. I, I just, I think we owe it to our community and to our students to, to utilize it as much as possible. So that's all I have to say. So can we make that change to go to this draft one and add these?
You'll have to think about what those days are first.
We could still approve it, let's just.
But I'm, I'm not talking about the days, but you know what I'm talking about, there's days that are very.
Yeah.
We have a, a no tolerance for snow days.
I will, I will, I'll predetermined five dates after I look at it, prove it as is, I'll put those dates in there and share it with you.
Yep.
But that's going with draft one, correct? In Wade, your opinion is draft two, but modified draft one is what we're.
I'll do five makeup days.
Predetermined, yep.
Got to look at one in April if you can. Makes sense?
Okay, so draft one with revised designated snow days, five of them, that's what we're going to approve.
Thousand eleven and a half, or eleven point seven hours.
Right. Yep. Starting on August nineteenth. I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the calendar as we just said.
Thank you.
I'll second you.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next is the new business section, so the financial report for December thirty-first. So page eight through thirteen, no? Maybe, sorry, my fingers, yep, eight through thirteen. Any questions on those items? We'll get to the bills after that.
Ellen, first page, first of that, page eight. Federal money sixty-seven thousand one ninety-eight, it's under general fund, is that ESSR money? Second column over, this page, page eight.
Capital outlay?
Yeah, no.
Capital, no, you were in general fund.
General fund, it's sixty-seven one ninety-eight from the federal. How much of that would be ESSR money or is it, or?
Probably none of it, it's ESSR money, it's probably more food service money.
But it's under general fund, does that make sense? That it comes in under general fund?
Food service money, no.
Title?
I'm just trying to think if we had, if we did have any ESSR, because I thought all the ESSR stuff was done already.
Well, last month we had a little, we had a hundred and some thousand capital outlay money in this federal. So I'm assuming that was ESSR money.
That probably would have been ESSR.
See, so I didn't know if part of this is ESSR, what our expectations are for next year.
He should have had all the ESSR money last month.
Okay.
But yeah, title would be in there.
I didn't have time to go look back and I, and that wouldn't tell me if there's ESSR in it anyway. But I mean, going forward, we'll see where that number goes.
Yeah, but, yeah, but title would be in there and we get like some re-gellers for the preschool would be in that.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of what else would be in general.
I'm just looking for numbers in here that are going to go away or go down in the next couple of years or after all the ESSR money's in, so. Okay.
The ESSR stuff should have all been in here already before, yeah.
Okay, move over two columns and it's capital projects, one forty-seven. No, no activity in this month, are we going to keep that?
No, we'll end up, I, I just waited this month, we could have done this month, but we'll, like, probably next month do a motion to move that back because I think we have everything paid for the capital project. And so we'll make a motion to move that back into capital outlay.
And then we don't need that capital projects, everything for capital or payments?
There won't be anything in capital projects, no, because, because our payments, yeah, don't come out of capital projects. Once the project's done, yep.
Then that all comes out of capital outlay funds? Pay our bill, yeah, okay. What else did I have? And here's another one, we got line on page nine, line one forty, general fund, for general fund due from federal government four hundred and fifty, four hundred and forty-eight thousand. Is that typically what that's going to be every year? This, this is a year to date to December, correct?
This would be through December.
Is this a six month from our fiscal year, is it calendar year to December, what is it?
Well, and this would be, be the school, the school year, so this, yeah, so half year, so we'd be.
Half year and we got four hundred and forty-eight thousand from federal.
I would have to look at that number because it says, yeah, this is due from federal government, so that would be.
Six months times that sixty-some thousand we had on the last page, you know, it, you know, there's quite a bit of money there, so. You know what I'm saying? I mean, you take that, if it's, you know, sixty-seven thousand, maybe it's fifty thousand a month and it gets you around this forty, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, so. I was just wondering, I don't know what that is or what it's for, what it's used for, where it comes from, but is it going to be consistent? I guess is what I'm thinking of, is that something we're going to see every year?
I can, I can look at that and just see where it's been.
You can do that and how much of that, if there's ESSR money into it, because then you know, you know, you'll probably get so much, we got to know how much we're going to get every year just from that without the ESSR money, you know? It'd be nice to know that, we're not going to know that till we look forward or till we, you know, when months go by, we'll be able to see that, how much.
Right, going forward we will because the ESSR's done, so.
ESSR's done, same. Okay. I think that's all I had on that, you know. You're, you're, explain this, so what you're, what are you going to do now? You got the capital projects fund, you got that minus one hundred thousand dollars way on the bottom of page eleven here. You got, you got a negative unassigned general fund, what, explain that column to me.
Well, it's on.
You got some negatives in there, you know, and I'm just not following how that's all.
But I would think once we do, we'll do have to do manual journal entries because that hundred and forty-seven thousand is what's in there, so.
Okay.
Do manual journal entries and I can actually work with the auditors to make that, I don't know why we have it on assigned.
Do you know why that's, explain to me, and I don't know all your, how it going to work, but you had two hundred and twenty-five thousand to start, you got a negative seventy-seven of, of pooled fund deposits?
Where are you, where are you at last?
Uh, page nine, way at the top, way at the top of that. You go pages back to the top of capital projects fund, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, you got a negative seventy-seven. Where that comes from, I don't know, you got pooled fund deposits, I don't know what that is, but it. You know, a negative, you got a parentheses around seventy-seven thousand.
Seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah, you know what that means or?
No, to me it looks like there's probably, there's something maybe wasn't transferred.
Okay, I just don't know, see, I don't know either.
So when we do this, I will have to look at, because I, we'll have to do a manual entry or entry for the pooled fund deposits to make that zero and the, the one oh one, to make both of them, so they should, so they will be zero, should be zero.
I just wasn't following, I'm not, still not following the math, but I'll let you.
Well, if you did, if you took those, if you took the seventy-seven, eight sixty-eight from the two twenty-five.
I understand that, it's going to add up, yeah, yeah, why that's a negative, I don't know.
It's, I think that like entries don't get transferred correctly or dollars don't get transferred because we put everything into our pooled, into one oh five or pooled fund.
Okay.
And so as we do things each month, we do entries to transfer money from pooled fund into the one oh one, which is the cash fund. So if something doesn't get transferred correctly, then that's where you're going to get.
Okay, okay.
Negative.
Um, let's see. Are we doing the bills yet?
Yeah, we'll do that next. Yeah, we'll do that next.
On this comment, okay. We need a motion on this part or not?
Yeah, we'll just see if anybody else has questions first. No, okay. So we'll take a motion on the financial report. Second?
Second.
Joel, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next we'll do the bills and I had, I don't know, did you see my email already, Ellen? I called out a few maybe that she could highlight for us first.
I'm looking at this one, the extra copy I had.
Oh, sure.
Danae, did you ask about ELO?
I, yeah.
Is that what you're asking about?
Well, there was a few, so.
Yeah, I had that one too.
So, the, um.
Do you want me to list them because I've made them up?
I have, I have.
Okay, so good.
So the AIX welding, that one, the, so we had, like, we, we purchased supplies from AIX welding.
Mm-hmm.
And so it picked, for the description, it picked supplies, but that actually was Perkins also for some other school.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so the majority of that was Perkins on that one.
And ELO, will you remind them with that, that ELO?
Audit.
That's the audit.
Yep, that's the audit, yep.
Really?
We're on the next, the new, like, we just got done, but we're starting this year's now, yeah.
And Justin's is your books?
I thought so, okay.
Is it safe to say that anything Perkins is reimbursed, one for one, dollar for dollar?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so we, we pay all the Perkins stuff for the eleven schools, yep, that are consortium, and then we get reimbursed.
Okay.
But we have to pay it and then we. Tight machinery, that was just all bus stuff again, bus repairs, replacement, gula tank, water pump, tire sealing leak. Accumulative of a number of buses is what that one was again.
Okay.
Um, US Bank is our bond, so which is our interest payment.
Oh, got it.
Is what, yep, US Bank is. And then Wiser Construction, they're in the snow removal now, so.
So do they get? They get so much a month?
They just bill by the hour.
By the hour.
Yeah, yeah, because we approve their bid and whatever.
So we got twenty-six hundred dollars worth of snow removal already?
That's what I was surprised by too. Mm-hmm, I guess so.
I'm just forget November and December, probably both.
I haven't run a loader on my yard yet, that's, I'm wondering where do we get the snow removal, okay.
Those are the ones I asked to be called out, but if you guys have other ones, can let us know.
Um, yeah, we're. That's all I had. How about you, Wade?
I don't, I, you have the ones I guess I had.
Okay, all right, I'll take a motion to approve the December bills.
I'll make a motion, Joel.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next is to set the school board election date.
So usually we do it the third Tuesday in June.
Third Tuesday?
June seventeenth, if that's what we do once we with the same.
In June, June seventeenth.
What we've done in the past, yes.
You don't have a mic, so that's why I'm repeating, just in case they don't hear you. No, it's okay. So June seventeenth, third Tuesday in June?
Thursday in June, yes.
Sorry, I see, no problem with that.
Okay, so she wants to do June seventeenth? Okay, because we have two, yeah.
I think Wade and I.
So Wade and, yep, yep, Wade and Danae would be this year.
Yep.
Okay, so June seventeenth, okay.
All right, so I'll take a motion to set that date, approve June seventeenth.
I will make a motion to set a date.
Leah?
I'll set it.
Joel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And the next is for the higher, higher of Michelle Ochendorf, bus driver. I should have asked ahead of time.
Ochendorf.
I knew I'd do that. Ochendorf? So sorry, Michelle, okay.
She was filling in part-time and then after the accident, Charlie Graff has gone back to part-time, so she's gonna go full-time, so it's kind of a swap.
Full-time, but, and she has a CDL even, so that's a win. Well, I welcome Michelle and I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, the next, we'll move on to the reports. Mr. Schirnbeck being first.
All right, first item on here is the bus rebate, which I had talked about. We were selected for that rebate, which was just around thirty-five thousand dollars that we were selected for. So Darwin and I will be working on getting, getting that bus ready. We have to submit some more paperwork and photos that we're actually destroying the old bus. So, just a PD update, just some things that we've been doing on our Fridays. We had Jamie Weisner from Inspire Learning come in here on January third and just talked about some supports for dyslexia students and possible screening tools and, and curriculum that, that she, that she uses. So she spent three hours with the elementary staff and about an hour with the middle school and high school staff in the afternoon. I've got the sheriff's office coming on the twenty-fourth of January to go through a refresher for Alice training. They've done this training probably two or three times in the past, so they will go through basically what Alice training is, is an active shooter training. It's the, Alice stands for alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. So they'll go through that process. More so probably the lockdown process as well as a refresher. Uh, the last thing I have on here is CPI training, that's crisis prevention training, that's for de-escalation of behaviors, which it's done through a company called CPI. All of our special ed staff and our paraprofessionals have gone through this. So this is a refresher course where they have to take some online modules and then it's followed up with an in-person instruction for about two or three hours. Both Todd and Katie are going to be taking part in that as well. Uh, next item, I just wanted to relay the, I know I talked to you guys about we're starting a playground committee, which we have done. I reached out to Mammoth and they came here on January third and took some measurements. Todd and I and Lynn Stoltenberg kinda talked about our vision and then they're going to put together some sort of an architectural photo and get us some costs and what that, what it would take to, to do some different things out on our playground. So more to come on that. I have not received that from the company yet. Uh, next item on here, I had told you I had a gentleman by the name of William Grubie come in and do a, a day-long AI presentation at the beginning of the year, which was very well received by our staff. He reached out to me about a month ago and he has created an AI curriculum and is trying to get into the state of South Dakota because it's very prominent. He's got a lot of schools in Minnesota and North Dakota. And he threw the proposal at me, I kinda went through it, gave him some feedback on it. Uh, basically what it is, it's a semester-long course geared towards juniors and seniors on how to use artificial intelligence ethically, how to use it properly, and what it can and can't do. So it's a plug-and-play curriculum. I have already talked to Katie and told her that she needs to create a time slot for it. Dr. Gearing will be teaching it. Right now, we're just to the point where I think she needs to figure out where it's gonna go on our schedule and how many kids we get signed up for it. So I think it's gonna be an exciting thing. I've talked to him about, you know, doing something at the freshman sophomore level and even lower than that, because these kids are using it. So I think those things are gonna be coming, but I thought it would be a good thing to jump on. It was, it's fifteen hundred dollars or twelve, fifteen hundred dollars for a semester, which I thought was, was fairly reasonable, so.
And that, you're just getting what with that?
You're getting all of the content.
So that's online type stuff?
It's, it's all online, you're getting, you're getting, you're getting lesson plans. Doc Gearing.
Oh, Gearing.
Doc Gearing, which is right up his alley. So it'll be, it'll be unique. I presented it to the superintendents last week and I got quite a bit of feedback when I talked about it and then he shared a video, Mitch Reed shared a video from this gentleman. So hopefully it spurred a little bit of interest from some other superintendents. Legislative session starts tomorrow. The hot topic for education obviously is the one and a half proposed percentage from the governor in her budget address and school vouchers, which you guys have heard me talk about. Right now, I just read an article this morning from our secretary of education. He wrote a big article that supports school vouchers, which is ironic, I would say, because there's a lot of people in, in the public school systems that are, that are knocking down the door to say, hey, this is gonna take money, it's gonna take dollars away from, from public schools and it's going to snowball over time. So I think it's gonna be an uphill battle. There's already two bills out there right now that are supporting school vouchers with one of our legislators in our district right here that are, that is, that is for it. So I have reached out to all three of them to explain how I feel about it. But I don't know, there's times I think it's somewhat predetermined that it's going to happen, but it'll be interesting to see, to see where this goes here. Word coming out, sorry.
That's okay. I didn't see it, did he say why he's in favor of it?
He thought it would, yeah, yeah, I can share the article with you. He thought it would create competition. He thinks that's something that all families should have, have a choice to and, yeah, you'd have to read it.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested in.
Yeah, it's ironic. I can share it with you guys.
Why that would be.
I can maybe understand in other places in the country where public education might not be what it is, but.
They absolutely need some of that in certain spots, absolutely do.
We are in the.
We're the, we're the school of last resort because, you know, we have to educate everybody in our community.
Yes.
And we're funded by the state. What's his comments on small schools in South Dakota? He's the South Dakota secretary of education. What is his comments on that? I mean, that's.
I would agree.
And where, where's that option going? Is it, is it affect homeschooling? Is that voucher?
Yeah, the money right now, the way, the way it's designated is it's about three thousand dollars. It'll, it's a three thousand dollar voucher that you could use for tuition to a private school, you could use it for curriculum. There's not a whole lot of accountability to those dollars from what I've read.
Like there never is.
So it's, yeah, and from what I've, I've listened to and what SASD has put out in some of these other states, it's snowballed into a huge budget item for these states and with very little accountability. So, which is another kicker. I mean, we have, public schools are held fiscally responsible, we're held to all kinds of things in regards to accountability where your private schools, homeschooling, those types of things. And this is nothing against homeschooling, it's nothing against private schools.
It's everything to do with funding for public school education.
Exactly.
That's the problem. If we don't lose funding, that's one thing.
Right.
I mean, if, if we get five thousand per kid and if we, all these vouchers go somewhere, now we're gonna get five hundred and fifty dollars because that makes up our difference, that's fine. But if it doesn't, I mean, then we gotta find cuts and we gotta educate kids.
Yes.
That's my issue with it.
Yes. So I've shared a lot of information with you guys over email. You guys obviously know where I stand on it. There is a resolution out there that the associated school boards had put out. I, I just wanted to have some feedback from you guys. Obviously, it's a discussion item now. Sometimes wonder what the resolutions actually prove other than it's a, it's a stance or a sign that, hey, our school board is not in favor of this. So we can talk about it now or I can put it down as an action item. I think from what I get from you guys that you're, you're obviously not in favor of, of the voucher system.
Have other states enacted this previously?
Vouchers, yes.
How, like, how is it affecting public education in the states that have?
I can't say that. All I can really talk to is probably the amount of money that some of these are putting in. I know Arizona was one, one gentleman that we had listened to that had gone. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous down there. And then we listened to another superintendent, I think he was from West Virginia, that they had fought it. They, they stayed it off a little bit, so.
You look at our schools in our state, and help me out with the numbers, but I've read these. But our state rates fairly high in educating kids across the United States compared to other states.
Most definitely.
So why are we trying to solve a problem we don't have here? I mean, why don't we make our rural schools as good as they can, help, you know, teach our teachers to be great teachers and that kinda thing and work, put money to that?
That is what we're all scratching our heads about.
Yeah, that's true.
Our state is already doing better with less money than most other states.
Yes, yeah, we got a good work ethic here in our, in our state and we're not Baltimore. You know, we're, you know, we're not inner cities where they, you know, I feel bad for those kids in those schools, you know, that system, but we're not that system.
I agree.
We're jumping on the wrong bandwagon.
Right, speaking to the choir. The only action that we could do is do that resolution if we felt like that's worth it for the next meeting.
Yeah, and I can throw it out.
Yeah, do guys, there's no harm in it, it's just saying that we're against it.
Contact with our legislator in this area.
I mean, all three, you could contact all three legislators. Kent Row, Dylan Jordan and Stephanie Soder are the, the three in our, our district.
Yeah, and I don't step off and talk with her. I don't know what her position is on that.
What's the gentleman that's pioneering it?
Uh, I think that, there's a few of them in the legislature that are pioneering them.
Okay.
Are pioneering it, which is where a lot of this is.
What do you mean pioneering it, put their name?
Put their name on it, yeah.
Yeah.
Who sponsored the bill or is, has it, it hasn't got to that level yet, has it?
Yeah, there's two bills out there, right? Yeah.
Let's go look.
I'd be in favor of the resolution if we could, whatever, anything to make a more unified voice.
Yeah.
Like there's value in that, so.
Right, I agree. So we can do that next meeting?
Last thing, and I didn't have it on the agenda and I know I'd send it out to you guys. I wanted to thank Dual County Farmers Union who ran the gas promotion for us in Dubrook. It raised nineteen hundred and fifty dollars, so both Travis and Jody came in and presented me with a check, which was, which is wonderful. And it's my understanding they're gonna run that a few more months here too. So they were very clear, they, we originally talked about giving, divying that money out to some organizations within the school, but they were pretty clear that they wanted that money to go to teacher supplies, so, which is, which is great. So once it's all said and done, that'll help, help with some of the things that our, that our teachers need. So I do appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and the only other thing I have on here is just the, the next board meeting, which is the tenth of February.
Yep. Okay. All right, we'll move on to Principal Hunt.
There aren't any sport events on that date, is there? I don't think so.
Oh, I don't know, I didn't even look.
I just.
It's a Monday, so I just feel like the odds are not.
I don't have anything on mine, I guess.
No, nothing.
I didn't know if we doubled up with maybe a basketball game or something, but it doesn't look like it.
I'm sorry? No, no. All right, go ahead.
All right, so I'm short and sweet this month. Staff recognition, I would like to recognize Dusty Horgan, Middle School Social Studies. He does such an amazing job at building relationships with the kids. I had the opportunity to pop into his classroom today and I had a lot of fun learning about the Louisiana Purchase, which of course, it's, you know, old news for me. But it was fascinating how he's able to present it in a way to the students where he relates it to what they know. And that was just really fun to see. The kids are completely engrossed in what he's saying and you can tell that they're engaged in learning. He's also always willing to help out, even though, you know, that he is busy too. He's got a lot of coaching opportunities that he takes for himself, plus he does the middle school student council and he just does an amazing job, so I wanted to recognize him. The next thing was seniors. Being halfway through the year, we're making darn sure that our seniors are on track for graduation and right now they all are. Some of them gave me some gray hairs at the end of first semester, but they are doing an amazing job and I appreciate how hard they work and how much parents are willing to communicate for our students. And then we recognized our students of the month last week and then we also recognized our cardinal card winners. Middle school, we recognized eleven and high school recognized forty.
That's great. Good numbers. Good, thank you. All right, Ms. Rowell?
All right, you can see my December students of the month as well as my December cardinal card winners as, and also the big winner of the drawing at the end of the semester, um, twenty-five dollar gift card goes to that individual listed there, um, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Andrew Rathbun, our head custodian, as well as Rose Mack, Colleen Bakie, and Jerry Gary, um, coming back after Christmas break, our floors were shiny again, um, they just do a fantastic job with four people, it's a lot of, a lot of square feet to try to cover to keep things clean and, um, just how they relate with the staff too and ask for what they need, um, and the staff is very appreciative of that, um, throughout our rounding sessions, I heard our custodians mentioned several times, um, which is a great thing, so I just want to give them a shout-out and let them know that their work is appreciated and it doesn't go unnoticed, so, thank you to those individuals. Um, second quarter report cards were sent home, printed and sent home last week, as well as our NWA MAPS winter family report, um, with those goes a little explanation about the report, um, each time, so that if parents have questions, they're definitely encouraged to talk to the teachers, um, that would be the place I would recommend starting and, um, myself as well, so, those have been sent home, other than that? Yeah, front and a back typically, and one more page if they are in second through eighth grade or whatever with the language usage test that is done, so, um, athletic-wise, um, full swing on things, uh, it's busy, so it's been good, um, just a couple of recognitions there for J.C. Horgan and Gabe Seather who both received, uh, MVP at the N-trainer Classic over the break, so, and look forward to a great second half of the school year as well as the athletic year. Very full.
But I do love those emails, thanks for doing those. Awesome, okay. All right, Ellen, you want to report on your business manager report?
So, the first thing I have is the Esser onsite review compliance letter, I think the last couple of months we talked about Esser that we had, um, finished that up and then we had a, um, compliance audit, and anyway, we received a letter, um, on December seventeenth, um, just saying that our purchases are consistent with the federal requirements under the program, and that we can monitor it, but I guess I feel that we, I, we passed, I think, yep, so I think we're compliant with everything that we did, um, on Esser.
Awesome.
So, hopefully we're, that's be, behind us, yeah.
Good job.
And there is some more compliance stuff, I know that, because like there, after each year of Esser, so I know we'll have, I mean, some more stuff to do, but that's just based on what we submitted and then we have to do some follow-up.
Yeah, that took you time, so, thanks for doing that.
So, we'll still, yep, so we'll, um, do that, um, the Essa survey, every student succeeds act, um, it's a compliance thing that we need to do each year, and what it does, it just looks at all of our, um, expenses throughout the year, so this would be for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and it just does a, um, like, current expenditures per student for local sources and, uh, federal sources, and then that's used on the, like, district report card, um, is where that information is used, it's a state.
Annual use in?
What's that?
Annual use in?
Yes, yep, because I had, yeah, because I remember doing it.
I don't remember this.
I had to do it right after I started, well, I probably did it right after I started, um, kind of last year, so anyway, that, yeah, um, on that, so that's done, that was due, well, this... And the twenty... Starting that already, and I think, um, we, the staff is in on the twenty-fourth, so I think we'll roll that out, just talk about, um, that we're going to get started on the budget, and then I'll get the spreadsheets rolled out to everybody so they can do their, um, request for what they need for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so we can pile, compile that all together for them.
That reminds me, we should schedule a finance committee meeting for January too, but we don't have to do that right now, but maybe tomorrow I'll send an email to get calendar times lined up, does that sound okay? Look at your face. I know, if we can fit it in, because I know my days are just as busy as yours, but, yeah, we'll see what we can do, or a finance committee, we got to get that scheduled. Okay. Great, thank you. Wade, do you want to report on any ESC?
Sure. Okay, uh, I guess the financial report really didn't have anything out, out, uh, outlying or outstanding there, uh, pretty straightforward, assistant director's report, um, Tim spent some time talking about, uh, the number of occupational therapists and occupational therapist assistants, um, we had three occupational therapists in twenty-two, twenty-three with two assistants, twenty-four, twenty-five, we flopped those, went two OTs and three OTAs, and just kind of wondering if that's feasible going forward or if they're going to have to revert back to what they were doing in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, he also discussed, um, revising, uh, some policies, uh, currently talked about, we have a combined policy of harassment, um, and, uh, looked at splitting that, um, uh, to be in compliance with Title IX. Director's report, uh, from Aniki, um, uh, she talked about the building, uh, we've talked about, uh, that they're in the process of selling off part of the building to the city of Haytai, really nothing new there, uh, still in the process of working through that sale, uh, she mentioned the literacy grant, uh, that's in the governor's budget, uh, for twenty-five, um, just waiting to hear how that will be, um, administered, um, it might involve funding for literacy coaching and an RTI program, um, she was wondering about maybe how NESC could bring someone in, um, to offer assistance, uh, with this, if this, uh, does come, uh, to happen, um, as far as helping with grant writing and those types of things for districts. She's looking at updating the curriculum for the center-based, uh, going forward and mentioned, um, uh, that she had launched a workload analysis to better understand the all responsibilities of the NESC staff. Let's see, no advisory committee in November, uh, audit report, no findings. That's pretty much it, any questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and we said our next meeting is February tenth at six PM, any other business? No? Um, sorry, hold on, I was going to look and see what the agenda items were for next February. Uh, we'll have evals, we... Legislative updates, not a lot, too much happening, um, we have on the schedule maybe academic retreat for February, but maybe we can plan or talk more about that and what that looks like. If that's feasible for February or not. I don't think we really finalized what to do there, so last, let's, this is going to, like, spark my memory though, so I don't know that I have a very good memory, but last February, March, we reviewed, and it's hard to compare data because when you first have the tests at the beginning of the year, that's like new test scores of new students, so to compare that one in February, we were wondering if it was value-added or not, and just to wait till the May test scores, is that what we were, maybe talk about, or the June meeting, and so is it value to have an academic retreat in the middle of the year, I guess was my question. Right, so is there, is it worth having one now, or should we just wait until June to do a whole year and review and see how the year improved over time from year to year, not midway through? Say that right? And I would be fine with that, doing a one-time a year review.
Yeah, I guess.
Right, but for us, I think an annual basis is fine.
Yep, I think that would work.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just plan for the June one then, okay, thanks for letting me go through that. Anything else? Okay, I'm going to say we're going to adjourn at seven fifteen, take a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned, thank you.